Hello everyone and welcome. My name is Raul Hernandez and I will be one of your co-hosts this evening. I am a student and have been here at Joliet Junior College since 2016 pursuing a degree in finance. I am wrapping up some final classes in order to transfer to a four-year university to further my education. I am a student leader here on campus and love being involved within the school. I founded the Investment Club and I am also part of Student Government wishing to make an impact.
Hello everyone, I'm your other co-host Eliana Malero. I am a student here at JGC and a history major with a passion for helping others. After graduating in May, I plan on transferring to a four-year university to obtain a degree in Higher Education Administration. I am an active student leader on campus with involvement in many clubs and organizations. On behalf of the Student Government Association, thank you all for joining us here today.
We are excited to have three Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees candidates joining us today for this public forum. Before we formally welcome them, let me take a minute to provide an overview of why we are hosting this event. Here at Joliet Junior College, Student Government is a group of individuals in charge of managing various events such as activities, programs, and student collaboration. We also consider ourselves the voice of the student body and share your insight with the administration. Today's event is important to us as the April 6th election is essential, not just to us as students but to also Joliet residents. The Board of Trustees represents the community's voice at JGC. The policymakers here today are the closest thing to the student body. They set the standard for achievement in the school district incorporating the community's views of what students should know and accomplish. Not only that, but to make JGC accessible to everyone in the community. These board electors are accountable for the performance of Joliet Junior College. It is the community's right to vote to elect new board members who will work diligently to provide an opportunity for students to receive a high-quality education which will enable them to succeed in their career, college, and life.
At this time, I would like to provide you with the guidelines for today's event. The forum will be moderated by members of the Student Government, Raul and myself. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes to provide an introduction of themselves. Prior to this event, the JGC Student Government members had sent out an invitation to the candidates and the three who are joining us here today are those who accepted the invitation. We have provided current students with the opportunity to submit questions. Student Government members collected questions and will be read during the event. The questions we ask today, we believe broadly represent all questions that are submitted. Please note the following guidelines for this event. All candidates will have three minutes to provide an introduction and reply to questions. No dialogue between candidates will be allowed following the responses and no distribution of election material or campaigning in any way at this event. This includes handouts or electronic communication. Ten minutes prior before the end of this session, we ask the candidates to provide their closing remarks and today's event will be recorded for future viewings. Again, thank you to our candidates for being here. Now let's get started.
Of the six candidates who will be on the ballot, three will be joining us today. We will begin the introduction of each candidate. It is our pleasure to invite you to provide a brief opening statement. Carla Francini-Monzo, Shanahan, Illinois. Jim Budzinski from Mokina, Illinois. And Maureen Broderick from New Lenox, Illinois. Carla, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me here this afternoon to speak to not only the students of JGC but the seven counties that come into JGC. So I'm a Mexican immigrant born in Sagatéca, Sagatéca is Mexico. I grew up in Joliet Southeast Side by Richards and Second Avenue. I attended St. Joseph's School, Providence Catholic High School, and JGC back in 1999, although I didn't earn my associates then. I have a BA in English, minored in secondary ad from Lewis University, and I have a general administrative degree from Governor State University. A few of my, I had a few setbacks with my son's illness. He battled AML and so I returned to JGC as an adult student in 2016. And so after taking those classes, I was able to earn a associate in May of 2018 after earning a bachelor's and master's. I'm seeking a degree from the University of Illinois, the Education Department and their Education Policy Organization and Leadership with Concentration and Diversity and Equity in Education. It is a social justice-oriented program that aims at providing educators with transformative approaches to issues related to diversity and equity in from preschool to 16 learning environments. The program, the program covers the intersection of disability, race, gender, sexual orientation, social class. I have two boys, 14 and 12. I'm currently a Shanahan resident, as it was mentioned. I am a Joliet Township High School teacher since 2008 and I've been involved in various, various ways at my school. I've been part of the strategic plan. I was part of the one-to-one initiative, family engagement, and three-way communication between family, school, and students. I've been part of the diversity committee. I helped create our vision statement for diversity and am currently a facilitator and was trained in restorative practices. I was also at Plainfield South High School from 2003 to 2008. Currently at my district, I am taking part of a new initiative which is our Pathways Academy and I work with highly at-risk students. Education is my passion and I am seeking to serve students in our nation's first community college established in 1901 in the building where I have, where I taught in 2008 till last year. Now I'm at a different building at Joliet Township. JGC was a foundation to my higher education achievements and I hope to be able to help other students achieve whatever their goals are academically, economically, personally. I will continue to support different pathways to students' educational needs, support programs that address the needs of all students regardless of race, age, socioeconomic status, disability, gender. And I hope to retain students all while maintaining affordable prices for the many students who come from the seven counties around this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
My name's Jim Budzinski. I'm a resident of Mokina. I moved to the District 525 boundaries or within the boundaries in 1985. I am married and I have four children, the youngest who is a senior in college right now. He should graduate in a couple of weeks. And I focus a lot on education for kids. I see what impact the cost of college has to families. All four of my kids went to private schools which is very, very expensive. And when I go to different schools working, I do some mentoring for code.org which is a computer software consortium that helps kids in grade school actually starting from four years on up learn to write computer code. For them, I'm listed as a classroom mentor. So I've been invited to a lot of classrooms in Will and Cankey Counties. And one of the things I came across a lot was kids would come up to me and say, "I'm interested in doing this, but there's no way I can afford to go to school. What do I do next?" Joliet Junior College has been my first choice for these children, you know, trying to convince them that they just can't stop. They have to continue going. This is a viable avenue to get them into a prospering career. They can further their education with a lot of programs they hear or they have here. And the biggest thing is, is they can actually discover themselves. They can come into Joliet Junior College, learn a little bit more about the focus that they have, but more so the focus on themselves. Is this really what they want to do? We know that most kids change their majors and this is a great place to come and discover themselves. My background in education is I started in 1979. I was recruited right out of high school to go into a corporate training center. So I did not start, I went to Prairie State in the evenings, you know, exposure to the school there, but the company I worked for sent me away to school. I did not go to a four-year college. I do have a bachelor's degree in information technology. I do have a networking degree. And two, two years ago, I left the corporate world after 40 years with the Fortune 500 company. I went into finance. I'm now a financial advisor. I passed all the FINRA and SEC exams to become an advisor along with the uniform combined state law exam. And I also recently just finished my accredited asset management specialist. I do not believe I've gone more than two years in my life without attending or participating in a learning event of some kind. I believe that almost any career we have now will be required continuing education. One of the things I did with the code.org is I worked in some teen centers and I worked, as I mentioned, in some Will County schools. The children do not know what opportunities they have. I think a big part of it is the communication that we have. We are not addressing some of the technical paths for kids down into the fifth and sixth grade. So when I've gone to the career fairs, even at the high school level, a lot of them aren't really sure where the next step for them is going to be. And I've been trying to put JGC first and I'm going to continue to do so. I'd like to see as many kids as possible in this program or in the programs here at JGC and I hope to see a lot of, you know, a lot more in the hallways here. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Hi, I'm Maureen Flanagan-Broderick, born and raised in New Lenox, Illinois. So I've been there a long time, haven't moved, pretty stable. I am, I have married to Greg for 38 years. We have three children and I have three grandchildren. So education is a big focus in my life all the time. I'm a mortgage lender banker for over 40 years, so I'm in deep in knowing financials. I look at student loan debt when I'm looking at people that are buying homes. And that's what got me into being on educational boards. I spent 12 years of my first term with the New Lenox School District, which was K through eight, and I wanted to get to know all about the school districts. That was my given and I wanted to give back to my community which I live in. Then because my children were getting older, I wanted to get more into knowing about the junior college. Junior college was always something that people talked about, but I wanted to know more about it, so I got engaged. And I'm so glad I did because in 2008, when we had the recession depression, if you want to call it that, when everybody hit the skids because of what happened in the market, my daughter was going to a four-year university. She never thought she'd be going to a two-year, a community college. Well, when things get rough and you start looking at finances and people nowadays should be looking at financial situations, we did a reverse transaction, they called a reverse transition, of going from a four-year to a two-year. I called up JGC and I was not on the board at this time. I called up to see what the options were, how we could get her into JGC. There was a waiting list because there was so much reverse transition. Enrollment was up at that time because of the need to reduce costs. She got in, she was in the nursing program, became a fantastic nurse. She did everything she was supposed to do and I fell in love with JGC. My youngest one, because my daughter's my second and my third child, went for, went to two years to a community college too. He loved it. It was the appropriate thing for him and we also watched tuition debt. Tuition debt, what parents don't realize is what is costing these kids, the inability to buy a home. When I look at that, I look at the cost of what we're doing now. I currently sit on the board. I'm with, been with the JGC board for the first six years now. This will be completing my first term with them. I came on as the secretary to the board for the first four years and now I'm the vice-chair of the board. I am also the Illinois Community College Trustees Association. I'm the delegate for that and I'm also the member of the American College Community Trustees Association too as the treasurer for two years. Highly involved to make sure that JGC is always the first community college. And that's what we stress when I'm out there, both national and Illinois statewide, we make sure that everyone knows that JGC has so much to bring. I have brought all the information of what we as our team, our board team, has brought to all of you. When we had the problem when the state budget wasn't there, yes, we had to raise tuition. Did we want to? No, but the state didn't fund us. But what did we give back and we were the only community college that gave back? We gave you back debit cards. We gave you back money and we insisted upon it before we moved any further with that. Right now with the CARES Act program that's in place, we have things that are set up for more scholarships through the foundation, because I was also the foundation rep. We have the foundation working with us for laptops, for access to the network system so that you can get on, the food pantry, babysitting. They're doing more scholarships and we are enforcing that. We are encouraging and enforcing them to do that, which is great. We love working with giving what we need back to the community. We're also looking at the transition of parents that have to go from, or adults that have to go from loss of jobs during the pandemic. I've been a very big advocate of making sure that we have enough courses, enough transition for them to come back. We're looking at MAP, you know, the MAP money to make sure that it's less hours so that there's more accessibility to the MAP money. We are looking at whatever it costs to get you guys into school to reduce your costs so that you guys can come and get a good qualified education. Plus the three-in-one program. The three-in-one program is fantastic. I'm hoping all of you are aware of it, that you've taken the three years of our tuition and the state schools, then you can get your four-year, four-year degree with three years of our tuition. That's something that Dr. Mitchell and our team worked out. I'm ecstatic to be back still to be on this board. I love working with this, this administration and with you students because I think you all need our assistance to make sure, because we're working with all of our state reps and our federal congressmen to make sure that we get higher education in front of them to know what the needs are. And I'm a strong advocate for all of the students to get quality education with low cost. Thank you.
Thank you all for sharing a little bit about yourselves. We are ready to get started with our questions. So I'll give Raul to get your, give you time already?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, so each candidate will be given the same question to answer. So we will begin with Jim. What skills and expertise do you have that will be beneficial in your role as JGC trustee?
Biggest skill I would bring to the board right now would be the financial background. I understand bond referendums and tax levying and I believe I would be not only a voting member of the board but also an educator on the board for those members who may not understand what it takes to issue bonds and refinance bonds. The second thing I would be most suited for is I have a background working with kids in different education paths. I, you know, have a lot of desire to see kids succeed and I think I would spend most of my time voting for the kids first.
Thank you. And then we'll start over for the next candidate at the time?
Yes.
All right, so Carla?
Thank you for the question. So my skill is specific to education. As a teacher, I've worked with a variety of diverse students and by diverse, I don't just mean different color students. I've worked specifically with students who have had, who have special needs, students with 504s, IAPs. I've worked with students, my district has very low socioeconomic with about 70 to 75% of our students are free or reduced lunch. So in my experience while working in my district, I have worked with students who are marginalized and students who are at risk. And so we need to keep the students who tend to be forgotten because they're not as successful as the ABC students. So I'm thinking students who need RCTE. As I was looking at some of the data that is posted on JGC, it seems like a lot more of our female students are successful compared to our male students. And so let's get some of our male students to get those degrees and finish and complete their, their desired certificate or degree that they're looking for. The other thing that I bring to the table is currently we are in a time where discrimination and racism has been brought afloat. And my current training with restorative practices is allowing me to heal my community in Joliet and I can bring that to the table in bringing in the diverse backgrounds from the seven counties because there are definitely diverse students who come to JGC. And again, I don't just mean race, but I mean age and socioeconomic status as well. So my goal is to always keep students at the forefront because you are the reason that JGC exists. You are the reason that education exists. Without students, we don't have anything. Thank you.
And Maureen?
Hi. I think my strongest background is besides the experience that I bring of 18 years now as a board member and understanding all of the facets of budgeting, making sure that we have sufficient itemizations of things that you need back in the classroom, courses that you need that are coming up that need to be addressed for you guys to be in class for a two-year period of time or to go on to a four-year education. I also have that finance degree that, or the finance background that helps us understand, as Jim has said, the bonds and the tax levying because we want to keep tuition down and we also need to watch out for the taxpayers. And you too will be a taxpayer one day, but we have to keep those. It's the students and our taxpayers that we have to watch out for. And I think watching that and allowing, since we're a policy board, we have to make sure and assure that our administration is taking care of all of you because they are the ones that make the rules. They are the ones that bring it to us and we are the ones that have to decide if it's good for you or not. And because as a policy board, we have to follow protocol and make sure that we're following it to make sure that we are protecting the whole environment at JGC. And I think I bring a lot of that because if you look at the six years of my voting record, you see that I ensure that there is safety and educational advantages for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got your timer ready?
Yeah.
All right. This one's for you, Carla. What makes you a unique candidate for this position?
I bring in a perspective that is lacking in education. And by that I mean you don't see a lot of Mexicanas, you don't see a lot of Immigrantes who come to America and who are successful. A lot of my people come here and they are struggling and I was one of the people who have been able to make it. There's not a lot of us Latinas who have a bachelor's degrees or have a master's degree. And so I bring the perspective of somebody who grew up on the Southeast Side of Joliet who, even though I went to private school, I was able to, with the support of my parents, earn a bachelor's degree, earn a master's degree. And I want to be able to be that role model for the many students specifically in the Joliet community since that is where I continue to have very strong ties. And so I just want to continue to have students believe in themselves that whatever it is that they want to achieve, it's possible for them.
Thank you. Maureen, what is, what makes you a unique candidate for this position?
It's the experience of already being a board member and it's also the experience of knowing what our situation is, especially with enrollment, where enrollment's at, what classes we need to bring in that's going to further the advancement of JGC. Also my involvement in the Illinois Community College Trustees Association. I work with all of our community schools in the state of Illinois and have a good relationship of understanding and knowing what statewide we are all going through. And I am able to bring that back and to bring what JGC is doing back to them. There's a constant open communication so that everyone knows what the targets are for us to make sure that higher education is at the top of the list. And you as students are at the top of the list to make sure that all of your demands are being taken care of and all of your needs are being taken care of. And when I look at the fact that statewide, statewide, we are down, everyone is down with enrollment, we have to do something. This pandemic has hurt us all. And I already am aware of what the school is already undertaking, what the administration's already undertaking, and what we as the board are proving to be moving forward to make sure things are moving in the right direction, to get you all back in the classroom, to make you feel comfortable that there's no needs that you're having. Because you know right now that we have a social counselor out there because some of you students are good with the virtual, some of you aren't good with the virtual. We have a counselor standing by to treat any of that situation and we're fully aware of it. Our administration has kept the board in the loop to know and I have that ability of already knowing what's going on. So my learning curve is nil because we are there. We are already working to make sure you have it better for your students.
Thank you, Maureen. Jim, what makes you a unique candidate for this position?
One of the things that I actually pride myself on as a unique candidate would be that I have a common influence. I don't react emotionally, I don't overreact in most situations. I tend to ask a lot of why questions. When people are jumping up and down over a decision that was made or a series of events that occurs, I want to know why. I like to look at the root cause and see what could have been done differently or what we can do differently to prevent it from happening or have it reoccur if it's something desirable. In that desire to calm everyone down and asking the why questions, I look at a lot of what decisions have been made and how they have affected them. Have they been good for the students? Have they been good for the taxpayers? Have the decision been good for the staff here? And if the answer to those questions can't be yes, then why are we doing some of the things we do? So with that, I bring a different look to some of the situations that the board will be faced with. Another thing I look at as a strength of mine is when I deal with people, I deal with an individual. I don't see color, I don't see race, I don't see any of the differences we see when we look at each other, short, tall. Those differences don't matter. What matters to me is the deaf person succeeding in his next step in life or her next step in life. The last time I was here, I had a forum event for the 2019 election, a young girl sat in the audience and walked me all the way to the door and we stood and talked for 20 more minutes. She was a minority. What she was looking for was just through conversation, she wanted affirmation as to what she was doing in her life was right and was the right step for her. And she drilled me on a lot of things that she's, she was doing and what I thought she should do. And to me, that's what I want to be. I want to be that advocate for every student here or even a staff member. We had students that come in the door, someday that student may be a doctor, someday that student may be a chef and make, you know, take advantage of the culinary arts program. There are so many differences in students, not only in the things we mentioned on race and color, but on skills, social skills and things they want to do in life. So we can't treat everyone the same. We have to accept everyone, but their needs, everyone walking in the door has a different need and we want to address those needs. We want them to feel that the choices they're making in life are going to evolve into something successful for them.
Thank you, Jim.
The next question, we'll start with Maureen. What excites you and or concerns you about, since you're already on the board, about extending your time on the board?
I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
What excites you and or concerns you about being on the board?
What excites me is that I want to keep seeing JGC as number one and I want to see the aggressiveness that we take in making sure that all of us at JGC are showing great strength in showing that JGC is still and always will be number one. We're seven counties wide. We want to make sure that JGC is always the star in all of those counties and we want to make sure that all of you, because our foundation that we have has our alumni in that and they are so proud of watching how our students are growing in their education. We have the background of looking at our foundation people, our alumni, and you guys should be, are part of that. That's part that we want to see and I love that. I just get excited when I see what they offer for you and the new steps that they take to do things, to develop things for you, the classes. We're also, I mean, we are looking at how we can get you in and out in, get your associate's degree. Your associate's degree when you go to a state college is wonderful. It doesn't change. You get that associate's degree and people in the state know that JGC carries a lot of weight. So I'm excited about that because I love the acknowledgement of JGC. It just excites me. And especially when I go to Illinois Community College Trustees meeting and they always go, "What does JGC think?" And I'm like, "Oh, this is exciting." So that excites me. What concerns me is I want to make sure that we make things affordable for you. And just lately, we voted to not charge the fees for the classes. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but we did decide not to do the fees. You have the tuition which is at the 113, but the $35 fee has been dropped because of the CARE Act program. So we are very attuned to what the CARE Act's allowing us to do, but we still want to make things affordable for you. So that's my concern and I want to see you get back into the classroom. I want to see the pandemic over. I want to see us go back to normal. Thank you.
For Carla, what excites you and or concerns you about joining the board?
So what excites me is working with other people to help students achieve personal, economic, academic, any goals that's going to make a person better, right? What concerns me is the different personalities that can be a part of a board because in order for a board to be successful, there needs to be trust first and foremost. That is a major thing in any relationship and we have seven adults who have to get together, right, and make decisions in the best interest of the students. When we have trust, we can have good communication and good communication means we need to listen to one another, not just speak, right? So we need to be able to listen what the other one is hearing and not just listen to respond, but truly listen to what everybody on the board has to say. And then having accountability, making sure that we are holding each other accountable because we represent the JGC community. And so that is what concerns me, working with different personalities where we can have trust, where we can have good communication, and where we can have accountability.
Thank you. And for Jim, what excites you and or concerns you about joining the board?
What excites me the most about the board is JGC has a good reputation. What I want to get to the point of seeing is you're going to find students out on the streets going into, you know, whether it's to the store or just out in public wearing JGC shirts. We see Illinois shirts, we see Notre Dame shirts. I want the students leaving JGC to be proud of what they've done here and what they've accomplished here. If in six years, the board is in the same state it is when I got there, then I didn't do my job. I want to see the board improve. I want to see things change that benefit the students, benefit the staff. I've had conversations with staff members that had some valid concerns. I want to see JGC known as a success in the neighborhood. Maureen mentioned when she goes downstate. I want people to ask, "What are you guys doing at JGC? Why are we seeing the results we're seeing out of JGC? Why are the kids so excited to be there? Why does the staff love working there? Why is the board so successful?" Those are the questions I want to see. The disadvantages, the drawbacks of working on the board, I think, like I say, I hopefully will be able to bring seven people together in conversation that the decisions made by the board satisfy what I mentioned earlier, what's right for the students, what's right for the staff, and what's right for the board.
Thank you.
Jim, this one's for you. What would you do to maintain open communication with your fellow board members if you were elected?
I am very accessible in my current job and even in my previous job. Everyone has my cell phone number and I make it very clear. People can call me anytime they have a question or a concern. A lot of times when they think of something that bothers them, it may be 9:30 at night. I don't want to wait till 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and have them- I don't want to wait till 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and have them lose a night's sleep. It may be a five minute conversation that, you know, says, yes, I'll commit to talking to you in the morning, but I want to be accessible to people. And I think the minute I'm hard to reach, a bridge or a wall starts getting built, I want to bridge relationships. I want to be able to talk to anyone. I want them all to feel comfortable calling me at any point. I don't want them to think that this is going to touch off something negative in the conversation. I want them to feel confident that regardless of what it is, that they can talk to me. Do we have to agree on everything? Absolutely not. Will we? Probably not. But are we working for the same thing together? Again, I'll come to why questions. Why are, you know, why is this an issue or, you know, what can we do to resolve it? And that, I'm looking at the end result. So building trust with the board, communication, constantly talking, making myself available. In the same token, me going to them when I have questions, asking the people versus, you know, starting side conversations or internet chats. I want to talk to the people and be involved.
Thank you, Jim. Maureen, what would you do to maintain open communication with your fellow board members if you were elected?
Here's the thing that first you have to be concerned about. One is the Open Meetings Act to make sure that it's one-on-one. You can't have one board member talking to three board members. So you have to make sure that you do follow those guidelines. So those have to be definitely respected. Second of all, whenever a new board member steps onto a board, whether it be one board member, two or three, you need to retreat. The retreat allows another third party to come in that's not interested in anything and knowing of you to start the stimulation of getting the communication going so that it starts a channel of communication. Because right off the block, there's going to be some that know stuff, there's going to be some that don't know stuff. This is a good way of forming a good communication base. And I firmly believe in that and I firmly believe that that are, those are the steps that we need to take. And then, then the relationships grow. As you get involved in the activities of the board, the board members talk. All of us have cell numbers, all of us are able to talk to each other and we each have each other's emails, which you have to be careful, as I said, with the Open Meetings Act to make sure you don't violate it. But I'm a firm believer in talking and making sure that we follow protocols and not violating the Open Meetings Act. Talking to our president to make sure she's aware of our concerns. She then also communicates any concern that I as a board member would have to her. She shares it out so there's further communication with the administration as well as the board. So communication is at the basis of everything and I believe in it.
Thank you. Carla, what would you do to maintain open communication with your fellow board members if you were elected?
So here's the kind of teacher that I am. You may be aware of the app called Remind. Students are able to access me through Remind whenever they need me, whenever they want. So they need something, they have a quick question. I've had students text me at like 8:30 at night and I've responded. I just say, don't text me past 10 because I'll be snoring by then. And I'll be up before you are, so you'll get a response at 6:00 in the morning. So I believe in being easily accessible to the people who you serve and the people who are there to help you serve the people that you're going to serve. And so like Jim said, I appreciate what he said in terms of if you need to talk to me, I'm there. And the same would be needed from the other person. If I need to speak to somebody else on the board, like I would hope that that's also reciprocated. So easily, easy accessibility.
Thank you, Carla.
For the next question, for Carla, how will you as a board member work with administration to ensure the college keeps meeting the needs of the students, employees and community members?
So I currently as a teacher work with my administrators to ensure that students have what they need. So I mentioned earlier that I have taught at Central until last year. I moved into a new building. And so my new role at Pathways Academy is to work very closely with my administrator to ensure that students', students' needs are met. And so I firmly believe in communicating with administrators so that they understand what I need in order to continue to help making, helping the students be successful. Because in understanding what I need, it's in the best interest of the students because at the forefront of my mind will always be what do students need? Like I said, I work with a high-risk population of students right now and so working very closely with not just my administrator in the building, but other administrators in other buildings such as the West Campus and the Central Campus has become very important in my role as a teacher. And so because I bring in that knowledge, I understand that working together with other people, with administrators, it always has to be at the forefront to meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. For James, well, Jim, sorry. How will you as a board member work with administration to ensure the college keeps meeting the needs of the students, employees and community members?
Well, there's a natural path between the students, the teachers up to administration. The students aren't going to be coming to the board immediately. So for me to understand the students, I need to understand the vision of the teachers. I need to understand the vision of the administration. When we see people move or leave, I'd like to know why. Is it something we didn't do for them or something we didn't provide for them? If it was a better opportunity, that's fine, but we need to understand, you know, what our staff is going through, what they're working towards and whether or not we're supporting them as a board. I'd hate to see a teacher out there that, you know, goes six years into their term with me on the board and say, oh, it would have been nice if somewhere during the way you could have provided this. Well, I need to know that. So just like we talked about with the communication with the board, I will probably spend a lot of time asking a lot of questions to the teachers, asking a lot of questions to the administration. In 2019, when I ran, I actually sat in the hallways here and talked to a lot of students going through the building to find out what they thought of JJC before I decided whether or not I wanted to run the first time. And it will be the same. I want to know what people, again, why are they here and do they want to be here? If they don't want to be here, I need to change what we have, you know, in place for them to be at. So it's just going to be communication and learning, spending some time and talking to the people.
Thank you. And for Maureen, how will you as a board member work with the administration to ensure the college keeps meeting the needs of the students, employees and community members?
Number one, we are responsible for one employee, which is the president. That's who the board hires and she is the CEO over the whole college. It is her duty to make sure that everyone tells what's, tells her what's going on so that the board is informed. But we as the board members are always open to listen. I've had, when I first came on six years ago and there was a lot of situations going on with the current president. I heard from more people because I was the new kid on the block. I heard from the staff, I heard from the students. It was interesting and it was worth listening to because I brought it back to the president and to the board for them to help me understand because I was new kid on the block. We have to have a respect to listen to what's coming up through the ranks where you tell, the students tell your governing bodies, that governing body goes to the administration and the administration goes to the president. We have to allow for certain processes to be in place, but still keep an open mind with an open ear and able to be in touch with them. So we are always looking out to make sure that everyone is in communication, but we have to also exercise the protocol, stay in place with a respect for who we are responsible for. Our employment is the CEO, which is Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Maureen, what kind of involvement do you have or hope to have with JJC community at large?
That's a good question because when I came on board, the first person that came in touch with me was the head of the foundation. I was excited to get more of an understanding of the foundation. Board members were not going to activities. And I said, why? That's something we should be going to so that people in the community know what JJC is all about, especially with them being the alumni. I think that we've got a 75% increase in attendance with the trustees going that hadn't been there. And the community saw that because I think we are elected, we are elected by the people, we are here for you as the students. We need to be out there. And I know every opportunity I get, I am out in the community as the trustee, as your advocate, talking about how great JJC is, what we can do, what do you think we should do? And also looking at the opportunity for more scholarships because look at what the scholarship base is right now at JJC, over 30 million. It has drastically increased in the six years that I've been here. Scholarships is what all of you can apply for. There are scholarships for everything, depending on your needs, your degrees, it's there and they are willing to help and they're giving more scholarships too. So my excitement was getting involved through the foundation because they had the repertoire of people that definitely feed into nourishing the Community College of JJC.
Thank you, Maureen. Jim, what kind of involvement do you have or hope to have with the JJC community at large?
Well, I mentioned I sat in the hallways and talked to students here. I will continue to do that. I coached soccer for over 20 years. I know a lot of the girls that I coached through the different years have come here. I have a couple right now that has, both of their daughters are in the culinary arts program. You can bet that if I get elected on April 6th, I'm going to go to them and as a trustee, ask for a sample of the cookies coming out of their program. I'm going to make what they're doing a part of my life. I'm going to try and make what the students are all doing part of my life. I have a background in Cisco networking. You can bet I will go down and visit the Cisco lab. I will talk to the teachers, I will talk to the students. I will find out if what we're doing for them is working for them. Are they able to walk out of here after being certified and get employed? If not, we will look at it. I will talk to as many people as possible and make myself available. Again, sitting in the hallways, talking to the students, the first time I did it was an enjoyable day. I didn't get any work done on my laptop because I was talking to people all day, but they want to know who the guy in the suit is sitting over there in the cafeteria. Some people came up and asked, most of them sat down and talked after I introduced myself. The staff will get to know me and the current students will get to know me.
Thank you, Jim. Carla, what kind of involvement do you have or hope to have with the JJC community at large?
So first and foremost, relationships are important, whether they're with students, staff, administrators, clerical, security, maintenance. It's every single relationship that we can build with everybody who is the JJC community is important. As I was looking at the diversity, diversity, inclusion and equity plan that JJC has posted, I may have read it too fast, but I noticed that I, and I could be wrong, so please correct me if I am wrong, that I did not see a board of trustee member in that committee. And so I know one of the things that as a teacher I am greatly involved in is many committees at Central, at my district. And so I guess I'd be interested in knowing what kind of committees there are that could use the voice of someone who has a large majority of the students coming into JJC. So I, I feel like that voice may be missing and so being a part of committees would be important to me.
Thank you, Carla.
Our next question for Jim, what changes would you bring to Joliet Junior College?
That's a difficult question. As a board member, I can't come in and dictate any changes. I can come in and recommend some things, I can talk to the other board. I want to see what they're, you know, what they have on a table, what are they working on right now? The board doesn't come to an end each election cycle, the process of the boards continue. I would like to see what they have in place and what are they working on. Making changes, I can make suggestions. I can't make any changes as a board member.
For Maureen, what changes would you bring to Joliet Junior College?
Being that we're one of seven, we are a minority unless the board votes and shares with a majority on something that comes before the board. We have all had the opportunity of bringing suggestions and ideas that we hear, but remember, it has to be a majority that approves it. We can make recommendations, but we are really the leader. JJC is really the leader on things that are happening throughout the last six years that I've been on. It's always JJC's doing this. I sit on the Central Committee for the American Community College Trustees Association and they're always floored at what JJC is doing. That should be good. That's a good thing. And we are always positive. We have to stay in the positive mode to make sure that everything that we discuss at our meetings is brought back to Dr. Mitchell, the president. So she hears what's coming out of members. She's very good at working with things and developing things and that's what we have to watch to make sure that the CEO is making changes that are needed based on what she's seen that's brought up through her channel of her administration, through you as students, through yours. So you also need to make sure that we are hearing you through your channels so that we hear what we're able to make decisions on too. And we love to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. For Carla, what changes would you bring to Joliet Junior College?
I think in my research that I've been doing on JJC, I've noticed that there is more interest in bringing awareness to diversity, inclusion and equity or equality. And I would like to definitely see more training on understanding the various backgrounds, the various needs of students. And so currently in my district, we're going through a paradigm shift of we've taught for many years as teachers who used to think, are used to thinking that we don't see color and color is not important. But we are now having a shift that says to us as teachers and educators and our administrators at JT that in acknowledging the color of our students, we are acknowledging the struggles that they bring with them. And the struggles that they bring with them are very different depending on where they're coming from. And so I would like to see more training to help students understand, or not students, to help staff understand the various situations and circumstances that our students come from.
Thank you.
For this next question, I would like to ask Carla, some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential students. Can you tell us your ideas for growing programs and enrollment at JJC during a difficult time such as the pandemic and social unrest?
So I love that JJC has pathways because that did not exist back in 1999 when I first came here. And I would continue to support the ideas of pathways as that is also what my district aligns itself with. We need to continue to think about creative ways and I'm thinking like grants. I know there was just a grant that JJC received for CDL drivers and working with, with that specific pathway. We need to be able to bring in creative ways, innovative ways to help the students who are going to need it, especially post-pandemic or even right now in the pandemic. So I will, I would like to continue to see focus on helping students who are not successful to be successful because so many times they feel so defeated and that's what causes them to not want to continue. And so I would like to build programs that allow them to feel supported so that they can continue their path regardless of, you know, more of like a holistic approach to a student because right now, the pandemic has definitely brought forth mental health and you could be a senior in high school, a freshman coming into JJC, you could be 35, 45, 55 years old, we're all struggling with mental health. Like we need to really acknowledge that. And so in order to help a student be successful, we need to think of ways in which we can holistically address the student's needs. So it's not always just academic. I like what Maureen said earlier that currently there is a counselor at hand, so when a student needs assistance, there's that counselor there. And so we definitely need to continue to advocate for those kinds of needs now and post-pandemic because so many of our students are struggling and will continue to struggle.
Thank you. Jim, some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential students. Can you tell us your ideas for growing programs and enrollment at JJC during a difficult time such as the pandemic and social unrest?
One of the things I look at with my children and with other kids I've talked to is they get through a degree program and now they go out job searching. And then they find out that, well, this employer's looking for that or this employer would like to see this. I would like to see us get more involved with employers in Illinois and find out what are they looking for? What do you want to see a student coming out of JJC have in his background? If it's one program or another, I'd like to tailor our programs to meet what the employer's needs are. We can get all the degrees we want, but if it's not what the employer is looking for, then students will feel it's a waste of money. And I don't like seeing somebody with a four-year degree, a three-year degree, a two-year degree, anything, sitting there after all that education and find out they can't get employed. So along with, yes, accolades forever for the, you know, the students who graduate, but are they employable? So I'd like to see us work towards that, making sure what they're coming out of there via career fairs, employer fairs, just put them in front of their actual employers. I know a school where the students have to wear a suit to any business class. Why? Because employers in the area are allowed to come in and audit the class. Their future employer might be sitting next to them and that's what I want to see. I want to see the businesses help support JJC as well. And that would be the area I would focus on is making our students the employee or the role model employee for those employers and make it easier for them to get hired.
Thank you. Maureen, some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential Maureen, some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential students. Can you tell us your ideas for growing programs and enrollment at Julia Junior College during a difficult time such as the pandemic and social unrest?
Well, as you know, that is the big topic of conversation for our board right now. And we are looking at the increased opportunities for medical opportunities. We are looking at whatever we can get that is with, because the medical needs are so high right now because of the baby boomers. And some of us fall into the baby boomers that sit at this table. And we're going to want constant medical attention when we get a little bit older. There's a twenty million call for more nurses and people in the medical field. And JJC has a very respected medical, medical attention to nursing. And our cabinet members have always been coming back to us telling us, looking at the classes, looking at the class size, looking at our satellite offices besides Joliet, besides this office and the Morris campus to see what we have and what we need to bring. They are constantly looking to see what the transition students are needing too. So if we have adult transition students that weren't, that the pandemic affected their income, we're looking at what's going to be successful for income to go through this pandemic to get them back into the workforce. So we are constantly bringing in new things as I'm sure you will see when you look to register, your registration, you'll see new courses that are out there that we are looking at. We got rid of some of the ones that weren't doing anything, but we are constantly in a steady up fast of increasing more opportunities for today's students, not yesterday's. And that's what we're looking for to put you back into the workforce. Plus, we are also working with Amy Murphy, who's working with all of the businesses for internships. Internship should be looked at seriously because that's your foot in the door. We both strongly believe in getting you into those internships. The foundation members also are supporting the internships things too. They also have a part in the internships, all locally, seven county wide, we have internships. And that's something that all the students should be looking at because we are looking at where the needs for the students are. And that's why I brought up the MAP grants. Because if we get less hours and we can get you in and get you funding for those programs for the shorter, not, not needing the associate degrees, but whatever certificate you're going to need, that's what we're looking to get you into the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
For Maureen, as a general observation, students are paying attention to the challenges the board is facing. How will you be a trustworthy and respectful board member?
I didn't hear the last part.
How will you be a trustworthy and respectful board member?
I think trustworthy is what you're looking at because we are known as trustees. It has to be mutual. Everyone has to understand and respect each other. And that's part of what you learn in your retreat when you come on board. Every time, every year, you should have a retreat so that everyone can understand who's your person, what your personalities are. Because you're going to walk on with seven different personalities. And then the community is not going to know either what you are, aren't by how you, how you are on the board. They don't know you personally. They just know how you vote. And I think your voting record then stands for you on how they should trust you based on what you come in with and how it's presented and the questions that we ask before we vote on something. So trust is established by listening to how we speak at our board meetings, listening to how we are in the community and listening to each other as we communicate across the table to each other and having respect for our fellow board members.
Thank you. For Jim, as a general observation, students are paying attention to the challenges the board is currently facing. How will you be a trustworthy and respectful board member?
Trust is something that is broken. Some trust is something that is upheld. If I make a commitment, the students are expecting my promise to be upheld. That is where I will build my trust. Understanding what their concerns are, what promises do I make to them and whether or not I follow through on my promises will be what I'll do on the Board of Directors here, or Board of Trustees, I'm sorry. Different things come up that are workshopped or things change during time, but my commitment to the students can't ever change. If I've promised something to them and I have to keep working towards that, I want them to see that no matter what, I'm an advocate for what I've promised to them. It can't be wavering. I can't change my mind to the next person who comes through the door. If I make the commitment to a student, that is going to be the commitment I keep.
Thank you. And for Carla, as general observation, students are paying attention to the challenges the board is currently facing. How will be, how will you be a trustworthy and respectful board member?
So in my current position as a teacher, I have to always watch what I say, what I do, whether it's on social media, off social media, on campus, off campus. So I already am in the mindset of I'm not only representing myself, but I represent my district. And so I'm bringing in that same mindset of not only am I representing myself, but I'm also representing JJC. And so what I say, what I do, on campus, off campus, social media, on phone, like I, I just, I have to be wary that, you know, there's a watchful eye on me as a teacher. And just like if anybody who's elected in these elected positions is also being watched very carefully because who we are as an individual is what we eventually represent or who we, what we stand for. So trustworthiness is extremely important.
Thank you.
For this next question, I would like to ask Jim, how could board of trustee members improve communication with students?
Being available. Do the students know how to reach the board? Do the students feel comfortable approaching the board? I want the students to understand that if I'm a board of trustee member, that they can call me, that they can contact me, that I'm approachable, that I don't overreact, that I will listen intently to what they have to say. Everything I do will be in best interest. I do that in the career I have now. I have to follow government regulations that say I do everything in the best interest of my clients. It would be the same thing here for the students. I would do what's in the best interest of my students.
Thank you. Maureen, how could board of trustee members improve communication with students?
Well, we have a student trustee on our board. That's your advocate. That's your force and way of getting communication to us is through your student trustee. Because we listen to him or her, whoever the designated trustee is, because we have respect for the information that is brought up. And I think in one of our last, I think it was two meetings ago, Ian had brought up a good presentation about the needs of things that you guys didn't know about. We opened up a full discussion for you to hear what we thought of what benefits would be for you from things that we knew of that you as students didn't know. That's a good way of communicating. You have a vehicle. You have that student trustee that then can come and bring things to the board at the board meeting if you don't want to. But we as trustees are always opening to listening. But I think your student trustee represents you. He is, he or she is your main point of contact with us too. And he should, he or she should know what your focus of concerns are. And if there's something, bring your groups from your respected individual groups. There's twenty of them, correct? That's on campus. Bring each one of your persons. Maybe it's something that should be brought to the president and she then bringing it to us so that we have a retreat with knowing what you students are needing. Because all we hear is what we hear secondhand sometimes, or sometimes when students decide that they want to come to us. Never be afraid to talk to us. You know, we want to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, how could board of trustee members improve communication with students?
So the amazing thing of JJC students is that they're at that age where they can vote, right? So I work with students who still can vote, but being that you are JJC students and that you're eighteen and over, that means that you may have also elected me as your representation to serve your needs. And just like I would be accessible to my fellow board of trustees or anybody else who would need me, who would need an ear, who would need to talk to me, I would be accessible to any student who would like to reach out to me, whether it be through phone, through email, through any way that you see fit. Because not only am I representing the other people who've chosen to elect me, who have chosen and elected me into office, but I'm also representing your needs. And so you sharing your needs and your concerns is important to me as well.
Thank you.
We are now approaching our final question. For Jim, JJC launched their Diversity, Equity and Inclusion DEI Plan in 2019. How will you support diversity, equity and inclusion practices at the college?
When I work in the teen centers, I am with students of every race there is. I see success. I see ability. I see desire in every student there is. My position would be to support them in any way I can. I think there's growth for everybody. I have yet to come across anything that makes me want to treat somebody differently.
For Carla, JJC launched their Diversity, Equity and Inclusion DEI Plan in 2019. How will you support diversity, equity and inclusion practices at JJC?
I love this question. I really do. And I love it because like I mentioned earlier, my district is definitely going towards more of a understanding that we are diverse people and we cannot continue to say color doesn't exist. We have to acknowledge that there is color. We cannot be colorblind because in being colorblind, then we are ignoring the differences and the struggles of individual people, so, or individual groups of people. So, you know, we've had Black Lives Matter. We currently have the Stop Asian Hate, right? So if we are seen as people who are accepting, as we're building community because we're accepting of other people, I want to bring in this power of healing through the restorative practices, training that I've received. It's intense. It's not easy. It's difficult. It's a process. But we need to be able to acknowledge the history that has hurt us as a nation and that to some extent continues to hurt us as a nation so that we can move together forward, acknowledging our differences and accepting those differences. So I love that, I love seeing that diversity plan because as I was looking through the website, I was like, oh, I like that 2019 plan right there. Let's, let's look what's in there. And there's a lot of interesting stuff that some, doesn't quite make sense to me, but you know, just from what I could glance at it and see it, I really liked looking through that, through that packet.
Thank you. And for Maureen, JJC launched their Diversity, Equity and Inclusion DEI Plan in 2019. How will you support diversity, equity and inclusion practices at JJC?
As a board member, I supported us bringing in escortina. I thought that was great. We needed it. It was something that was very welcomed by our board. Also, I don't know if you're familiar with this, but our plan, the DEI plan went national. ACCT is now using our plan from JJC because it is so well-rounded to take care of all to make sure that there is no diversities. They are using that as the guideline and the model through all fifty states. And we are handing that out, letting them have it. So JJC has initiated that and it's a wonderful thing to have. We needed it. It's welcomed. I think all of our board voted yes for it and wanted the hiring of escortina and the development of the plan, of the DEI plan. And I'm also going to be on the DEI committee for national. I'm excited about it. I think this is a great step for us to progress going forward with everyone. I mean, everyone inclusive, so no one feels left behind. Because like they did with the no child left behind, it's like no student left behind, no one left behind. And I'm a firm believer of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the remaining time that we have left, we would like to provide you each three minutes for closing remarks. Carla, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you. COVID has brought afloat many of the problems with marginalization, continued discrimination and racism. Reading materials at Providence, there was a book that I, that I was given by Mrs. Cromley, I still remember her name, There Are No Children Here by Alex Kotlitz. It took place in Chicago and it taught me empathy because it discussed marginalization, discrimination, racism and disparities. Jonathan Kozel wrote Savage Inequalities. And I read this book at Lewis University and it brought discussion of the have and the have-nots. A few years back, we heard the terms affluent and poorfluent when, when the media began showing examples of unequal consequences depending on the color of one's skin. Many times, race and socioeconomic status go hand in hand. Today, we use the terms privileged and unprivileged. While our privileges such as socioeconomic statuses can fluctuate, today you have a job and a home, tomorrow you're jobless and homeless, other parts of our social identity remain the same. We need to close the disparities that COVID has emphasized and find ways for JJC to be positively promoted and remain creative, accessible and affordable for the many diverse communities that JJC serves. It would be an honor to represent you and serve you, especially during the time of healing and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
We look at people now and so many are judged on, are they a college graduate or are they not? Success isn't measured by that. Success is measured by their education, yes, but are they fulfilling their life dream? Some kids come to school with no intentions of ever getting a four-year degree. They may be intent on learning something to get them into the workforce. We're all different. They all have different needs. They all have different wants. I want to address those. I want the person to feel self-accomplished. I want to affirm that they have accomplished what they've set out to do. It isn't measured by something I put in front of them. It isn't the college degree. It isn't, you know, money. It's, are they fulfilling their dream? Are they providing for their family or themselves? Are they comfortable with where they're at in society? Color doesn't matter. Ethnicity doesn't matter. It's what that person wants for themselves. If we put together anything that puts guidelines on where they're going to end up, I feel we're wrong. I think we should have as many opportunities for as many types of individuals there are. I feel that the support for them should be as diverse as possible. They may not want what we think is best for them. And who are we? So I would like the students to have JJC as their first choice, but I'd like their self-desires to be their first choice. And I want to create that environment for them.
Thank you, Jim. Maureen?
I think the main focus here with all of us should be, and this is just my opinion as being a board member for six years, is to continue with the success of keeping JJC as the number one community college, striving and showing the efforts that we make for a better environment for you, the community, for all of us. I believe as a board member, and that's why I'm running again, that we have done so much for this community. We have, we poured ourselves out. We've, we've made our president, because we are a policy board, we've made our president be more involved in the community. JJC is showing more now as a great community college to go to, as an affordable option, which should be the option that parents are looking at. A lot of times, students just say, I want to get out of the house when they get out of, they graduate from high school. We want them to know that there are options and financials should be considered. And any one of you, and I think Grau, you're in finances, you'll know, we don't want to walk out with a lot of debt, but we want to have quality education. What's the answer? The answer is a community college. More parents now are realizing that. And I think we as trustees and those that you elect to put into these positions need to be prophesizing that community colleges are your answer. They're a financial answer. They're a good solution answer, but they're great quality education that you receive. And it's transferred and the quality of JJC's education goes on. I don't hear too many colleges that aren't accepting all of your credits. From what I understand, they are accepting them because that's what we've done to make sure that the credits are transferable. So I want to make sure that the community knows that we are involved, that we are here for you. There's no question about ethnicity or origin or sex or race. We are here for everyone. That is the reason we are here is to make sure everyone in our seven counties has equality throughout and gains to go to the next level. Because what's better, what's better for a parent to give a child or their, or their, 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 and I say their children, is their education. I always look at Christmas. What was the best thing I could do at Christmas? Was it to give them a big gift or is it to give them something that's quality for their education? And I always looked at that as, this is what I want to give you. I don't want to give you a big gift, but I want to give you your education. And I pride myself in knowing that because I look at all of those that come in with student loans and they suffer through trying to pay them. We want to make the answers here. JJC is the answer and keep that in the foremost upfront. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to each of our panels for their participation in today's event. We appreciate your time. We hope this opportunity was beneficial to you as you determine what is important to you for the future of JJC. On behalf of the student government, thank you and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you.